I said we're ready when you want.
Oh, I can't start early, though.
No, no, it's cool about like today, you know, really cool.
That would be against the rules.
I've run into all these people already, and they're full-time part of the years.
That's right.
I can't get it. Something else, you know. Wow. Better. Different.
She's safer to rent.
Other Chris?
Yeah. How's that look like?
Hi, that's true. This is so good, huh? Twenty twenty. I mean, we're doing this. He's sharing with Dan here since. For two years, he's been outstanding for years. Just works it up easy. And they live in a trailer, and they got a base area. They go for it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Twenty twenty five. Yeah. Virtual surprise, right?
Welcome, everyone, to our May 5th Cache County Planning Commission meeting. We begin our meetings with opening remarks, and on the schedule tonight to give opening remarks and the pledge is Brady Christensen.
Thank you. I'm gonna do my remarks tonight in the form of a prayer, my opening remarks, and then we'll do the pledge of allegiance. Our heavenly Father, great Father, many blessings, thank this night that we could be here as members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. We're thankful, heavenly Father, for the freedoms that we experience living in the country, in this county in which we live in. We ask thee that too, we may use good judgment in the things that we discuss this night, and that we will think at the best interest of the county in following the rules and the guidelines that we have before us. We thank thee once again for all that thou has blessed us with, for the moisture which we've received, and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen. Please stand and join with me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks. Thank you, Brady. Okay, next on our agenda is the review and approval of the minutes. Commissioners have a chance to take a look at those. Any comments or suggestions in that regard? If not, without objection, we'll approve the minutes from our April 7th, 2022 meeting. The next items on our agenda are the consent items. We have three of those, and for those of you in the audience, consent agenda items are items that come to the Planning Commission that meet all the requirements for our ordinance, and we simply generally approve those unless there are any questions. So the three items are the Thatcher Minor Subdivision First Amendment, the Legacy Minor Subdivision Second Amendment, and the Mountain View Subdivision Request for Six Month Extension. And so is anyone here in the audience has questions or comments on either, any of the consent items? Okay, if not, I would appreciate a motion to approve the three consent items based on the conditions and findings of their respective items.
So moved.
And we have a motion?
A second.
And a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the three consent items are approved. Next item on our agenda is part of the regular action items tonight. It's a public hearing. We still got a couple of minutes before 5:35 PM, but I think we can have a review from staff on item number four, the Woodbury Rezone.
Yes, Chair, just one moment, I was gonna bring that up on the revenue service of that particular property. Tim likes it when I talk in the microphones, so here we go. Okay, here's the subject parcel that we are talking about. This is the Woodbury Rezone. It is a request to rezone 10 acres from the agricultural A-10 zone to the rural 2-zone. This would allow the parcel to be legally divided into a maximum of five separate lots as part of a subdivision process. Staff has identified general information as it pertains to the subject property to assist the Planning Commission and County Council at arriving at a decision. We do have our rezone map that's attached as A, but is also located under the land use context that gives us some understanding of what is happening around this property. But it is a legal property, though it is not in the same size and configuration as in August of 2006, which is our new line by which we determine parcel legality. At that time, there were three separate parcels, but they were combined in 2016 to the existing one parcel configuration. I can bring up this map for the audience here. So immediately adjacent to the subject property, there are five parcels with a home and an average parcel size of eight acres, and then there are four parcels without a home with over 27.2 acre average size. We expand that buffer to a quarter mile from the subject property, and there are now 16 parcels with a home and an average lot size of 5.6 acres. Without a home, there are 15 parcels and an average lot size of 24.4. When we look at the buffer and expand it to a half a mile within the subject property, there are 20 parcels with a home and an average lot size of 7.4 acres, and without a home, the average lot size is 22 and a half acres on 39 parcels. As mentioned, the proposed RU2 zone allows for a maximum density of one lot for every two acres, whereas the current A-10 zone allows for a maximum density of one lot for every 10. So with the 10 acres of the current property, it cannot be further divided, and the rezone would allow up to five, a maximum of five lots, as mentioned before. Properties adjacent to the subject, to the requested rezone, are primarily agricultural and single-family dwellings. It is within the Mendon City annexation area, but it's located more than a mile away from the nearest Mendon City boundary, and that would be the north boundary. As identified by the Planning Commission and County Council, at the time the RU2 zone was adopted, the intended or anticipated placement of this zone was in areas of the county adjacent to municipalities. The nearest Mendon City boundary, as mentioned before, is over a mile south of the subject property along Highway 23. The nearest RU2 zone is the High Country Estates. I could kind of zoom out here and show you the zoning, but that's in Petersburg to the west, and, sorry, let me just get this county zoning on here. So, yeah, the red is commercial, so the nearest RU2 is here, the High Country Estates, and then after that, the nearest is actually on the other side of Mendon. It's a few that have been approved along 2000 South, just on the south end of Mendon City, but everything around there is more or less A-10. As I mentioned, the commercial is in the red, so we have the AIS systems here, and then some commercial here at the corner of the highway. Access to the subject property is from the state Route 23, which is the UDOT facility. Let me just take this off again and zoom back. Sorry, I hope I'm not giving you any motion sickness here. One moment. And it is an existing UDOT facility. It's classified as a minor arterial. Minor arterials in rural areas are typically designed to provide relatively high overall travel speeds with minimum interference to through movement. It does provide access to multiple dwellings and ag uses, but is primarily the main connection between Mendon and Wellsville to access SR30 and Highway 8991. The section of SR23 is classified per UDOT as an access category four, which has a minimum driveway spacing of 500 feet and a minimum street spacing of 660 feet. Obviously, any proposed development access must be approved by UDOT, but in addition to UDOT's requirements, frontage in the county requires a minimum of 90 feet on a public or private road, and based on our initial review with the existing grid pattern and existing roadways, it does not appear that access that meets the requirements of the county road manual would be possible in a future subdivision in combination with the UDOT requirements, because a private road built along the south property as a concept to meet the private road frontage requirements, the county would have to also meet the spacing requirements from 800 West here, or 800 North, excuse me, and it would not meet that. Also, it might be possible on the north side of the property, directly across from that county road, county facility, however, that location is not located on the subject property, but on an adjacent property owner's parcel. And FIRE did not have any comments on it. Logan City Environmental provides refuse collection in the area, but had no comments. Public notice was posted. In addition to the two, the emails, I sent you an email the other day with two public comments attached, and I have received two additional that I just placed in the shared drive for you to access and review. All four of those comments from the public are in opposition to the requested rezone, and staff is also recommending denial, primarily because it is not in close proximity to Mendon City, and the access requirements along SR23, combining the UDOT requirements as well as the county requirements for frontage and access spacing, does not appear to be possible. With that, that concludes staff's report.
Commissioners, any questions for staff? Okay, I'd take a motion to open the public hearing, then.
I'd make a motion to open that.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to open the public hearing. Any additional comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll open the public hearing. Would the applicant like to come up and make any comments? You get to come up to the microphone over here and state your name for us, and take your time, and appreciate you coming out.
I'm Kristy Lee Woodbury Nelson, and I just wanted to divide it in half to just let my brother go on that property.
Why not RU5?
I don't know. When I went in, I said that's what I wanted, and they said we'll put it in with the R2. I was explaining that the RU5, they have exactly 10 acres, so if there's any sensitive areas or road dedication.
Yeah, if there was anything taken out, you wouldn't be able to split it.
Applied for that one.
Commissioners, any, any questions for the applicant?
No, I just, I'm gonna say word the way it's, at exactly 10 acres, you really can't split that into two and build on, on, on either place if it were back to an RU5.
Right.
So RU2 is the next best, but that's not why we established an RU2 in the county, when the county council decided we would go with RU2s, why, there was a specific reason, and this really doesn't fit that, so that's only.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you. Would anyone else like to make any comments on this item tonight? If so, please come on out. State your name for us, please.
My name's Bruce Schuster, and we're the lot directly south of this one, and we just wanted to propose to RU2, so we agree with staff, staff ruling, based on several others' closer demand that have been denied as well, after that same reason.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else would like to make a comment on this item tonight? Come on up. Please state your name for us.
Sure. Valerie Harris. I actually sent in one of those letters you've already received, so you see all my points were neighbors, and it's just not something that, we're in agricultural land, we came out to be in agricultural and have changed the neighborhood just as conducive to what we got there for, what Cache County's zone everything's for, as an A-10. So we, I, me and my husband both opposed it, so.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anyone else? All right, commissioners?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, comments, suggestions, questions?
It's unfortunate that it's exactly 10 acres. I can see building one more home on, on that, but if you can't get it, get two homes on 10 acres, then it really kicks it out, and then RU2, that's not why we established an RU2 that far out from city limits, so it kind of goes against what we're trying to do in the county, and the county council is giving us that direction, so.
So, just to clarify, I don't know why I'm slow getting this. If it's 10 acres, which, uh, this shows it's exactly 10, so if we go RU5, and I'm not, I'm still not in favor of the RU5, but just a question for future reference, why would that not qualify for an RU5 to five-acre parcels? Are we worried that the access or something's gonna cut away from that?
Well, if any road dedication, and you can see that the property line kind of lies within the UDOT SR23, so any road dedications in any sensitive areas could take away from their net developable, so it's not the gross acreage, it's the net.
So because of the UDOT right-of-way, that would, that would decrease their 10 acres?
Yeah, it would put them below 10, so even if it was 9.8 or 9.7, that's not 10, and we don't round up.
I, I follow you now.
Are there questions, comments, commissioners? Okay, what would you like to do?
I'd make a motion to recommend denial to the county council for this.
Okay, we have a motion to recommend denial based on the conclusion provided, is that correct?
Yeah.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Ms. Woodbury, plead your case with the county council, you got another chance, and see if they feel differently from us.
Buy some food from the neighbor.
So, we're sympathetic to what your intent is, certainly, so, but unfortunately, we're recommending denial. It's ultimately the council's decision, and so we wish you the best of luck with them.
Does that make sense to you? Oh, yeah, it all makes sense. I even learned stuff.
That's my objective as chairman, is to have people come in and learn a little something about their local government, so we appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, our next item on the agenda is a discussion on, excuse me, use-related definitions. Looks like Tim may be leading us in that discussion.
Yes. Logan, just be with you. Is it the?
I'll watch it.
Yeah, just a, just a road dedication would, would take that out?
We could give up anywhere to that.
I think there's some ground in the middle of that that's steep enough that it might be sensitive ground, because it's so steep, so that might take an acre out of it also on that.
Yeah.
Okay, so we've done a little, little digging around, got a few ideas to run by you related to Cache County Development Services' application to amend, potentially amend, use-related definitions for recreation facility, and also look at the schedule of zoning uses, and specifically the RV campground aspect of that. And this follows a fairly controversial series of public meetings and reviews, and also an uptick in inquiries related to campgrounds. And I'll share with you a little bit anecdotally of what we've been hearing, and then a little bit of what we've been learning. And so from the, from the street, the phone calls, and the inquiries, there's a definite interest towards tiny homes and permanent dwellings associated with RV campgrounds. As you can imagine, the demand for, and the cost of housing, the demand for housing is just really pushing market towards where can tiny homes go, where can people live in something they can afford. As, as challenging as that issue is, and as sympathetic as we might feel towards that, RV campground is a recreational use, and the 30-day limit, a limited stay of 30 days stands in our code as well as Logan City's code. I don't know how many of you are aware that early 2021, late 2020, there was a look at amending Logan City's recreational code related to campgrounds, and the proposal by an applicant, a citizen developer applicant, was to increase it to 90 days, not only that, but then to allow an RV camp camper to relocate within the same development and extend another 90 days, just kind of hop around every few months in the same. And anecdotally, you know, I've heard of construction workers that stay months and months on end, live out of state, stay in an RV campground area to reduce the cost of housing, or we should say lodging in our area, and work on some very important projects in our community. So there's the, the folks looking to save up money to buy a home. I had a coworker when I worked in Leighton, that she and her husband and their dogs moved into an RV campground, and I don't know if the city knew or cared, the other city that they lived in, but they, they stayed there several months, and it allowed them to save up some money towards purchasing a home. So there's this sort of continuum between folks needing housing, needing a place to save money, find lodging, get settled in, find out if they want to stay in a community once they accept a job here, to those who are just temporarily working here. But all of that aside, I, we've received additional calls asking, could we do tiny homes, can we do permanent homes in this RV campground zone? And the answer is no, it's limited to 30 days, and then they lose interest, and, you know, we recommend that they explore with cities where tiny homes and permanent structures would go for, for permanent housing. So that's kind of the anecdotal word on the street. What I have on the screen is actually what we heard from Bear River Health Department, and I will mention that we, we did send a notice of the Hollow Ridge Campground, RV Campground, conditional use, and I'm sure they're like us, they get a lot of applications and items to review. On that particular item, we did not hear from them prior to the meetings, the decision that we made, collected, that you made as the condition, but we heard after the approval, as the applicant was starting to look into more and more information, and they shared the state regulations, which our code requires compliance with state regulations. But a snapshot of that is up here on the screen, and they just stated that there are, Department of Health, that Bear River Health Department shares administrative responsibility to administer, related to, what is it, RV park and associated requirements. And in short, the little highlighted text to the left states that RV park is a site tract or parcel of land on which facilities have been developed to provide temporary living quarters for two or more recreation facilities.
Vehicles.
Vehicles, thank you. Recreational vehicles. And then just the yellow text at the lower right highlights some of the key, rather substantial standards that need to be fulfilled, and that includes a public water system, and once that's established, then a source water protection area is applied, sort of buffer around that.
Assuming they're, they're getting their water system from on-site.
Correct.
Kicks in the source water protection. If they, if they drilled a well, for example, then it becomes a source.
So, and, and the clear preference of the Health Department is that city municipal existing public water system or public sewer system is provided. That's the clear preference. But in this case, of the focus on the East Smithfield area subject system, they would have to first be rejected and not be accepted, and not be practicable, as it states, for sewer and water, and especially sewer, that they, the state really encourages to attempt to obtain an existing sewer system hookup, or if that's not practicable, whatever that means, and whoever makes that decision, then wastewater system can be designed, but with criteria related to how close it is to public water system, the surrounding source water protection area, and a dump station is required. So that would have been nice to know.
Right. But so, what you're saying, though, if I understand you correctly, that individual's still gonna have to meet this.
Oh, even though we didn't say it.
Even though we approved it, but that's not our responsibility to prove that, or to enforce this, but he's still gonna have to follow.
That's correct. The stricter standards apply, and our code does reference state standards as applicable to any development.
Can, can you tell us, Tim, do you know what the status is of that project, then?
I think they're doing some research into these standards and requirements, and then at the same time, May 19th, there will be a Board of Adjustments meeting to consider appeal by a group in the community.
Okay.
Appeal with this body, or appeal with Smithfield City?
Appeal with County Board of Adjustments. And it's more procedural to see that everything was handled appropriately and reviewed fairly and considered fairly appropriately, and so that'll be.
I'm, I'm trying to recall, didn't, did the city say they would provide utilities if they, or they say no?
No, he was adamant, they would.
Okay, they were not, okay, I'm, sorry, I didn't remember that, folks.
I think, I think that's what pushed it to the campground, too, was kind of like, okay.
Right, because my understanding was he wanted to do, do homes, like are already there, but they wouldn't, they're at the point where Smithfield City's not annexing anyone else in anymore in.
Any, anyone that the power line touches.
And so he said, okay, what if I do an RV, and they're like, well, no, don't do that, and so, I mean, privately, I think, at least someone, that's what someone told me, was that he was gonna go for the RV CUP, and then if, once he got approval for that, go back to Smithfield City and say, now can I build homes? Because if not, I have a ticket to build trailers that you don't want, you know, for the RV campground that you don't want.
Ticket, it still needs some punches in it to get approval.
Yeah.
There's some research we've done, and just as a matter of procedure, once the Board of Adjustment makes a determination as to whether the CUP as, as approved stands, or whether a minor amendment is needed, or it's overturned, the clock would not, one-year clock to implement that CUP begins once that's brought to resolution.
Yeah.
Board of Adjustments.
Once all, everything's exhausted.
I recall that I ever went to the, the district court, but.
So does the Board of Adjustments, do they take into consideration the state side of it, or?
Well, we'll, we'll share the same information that, that state codes apply, and that that information was not available to us, but it's available now, but the stricter standards apply, and so really, there's no contradiction there in terms of county.
Yeah, there really isn't.
State's more strict than county's.
I, I don't really recall, but can we even put in our conditions that they comply with the, as part of the CUP? the, as part of the CUP, that they comply with the Health Department?
That could be, that could have been a condition, had there been more focus and understanding of that.
Well, I, I kind of think I've saw it before, but I don't remember it consistently. So that's why I was asking.
That's a good question, Brady, and I think what I'd like to do and intended to do for tonight was just to see if there was a reference, because if it states that all county code standards apply, that includes state standards apply as well. So at any rate, I, I think the focus of the, the board of adjustments is what the, the appeal states is, is process.
Yeah.
And this and that, so. Okay, so knowing that a public system, water system is required for two or more RVs in a campground and then based on the number of, of units that make that public water system feasible, I understand there's also kind of a five thousand gallon threshold above which waste water system gets into a level of state standards as well. I'm just beginning to understand and learn these things, but it, it's a pretty substantial RV park that would be feasible to, to absorb those costs. So I'm gonna scale it back and just focus on one RV parking site as an agritourism option. We might have mentioned that this is one project that we could explore and then we'll get back to kind of a larger type of facility. So these are picked, these are the kind of glorified idealistic images, the real places that allow for an RV, what you might call a, probably a dry site, parking site. This is from a site called Harvest, Harvest Host. Seems to focus quite a bit on wineries, breweries, but also just farms and attractions and so certain types of RVers pay a, an annual subscription and then they, they have kind of a pass to attend all these different places, most of which have some form of agritourism associated with it. It just facilitates people coming to stay, enjoy the experience of the farm and just adds to the revenues of, of the host. Here's another probably less upscale, maybe more modern scale. So this is actually in Weymouth Weaver, a listing on Hip Camp. I don't know if anyone's looked at Hip Camp and for thirty dollars a night, you can park your RV on a horse ranch and enjoy the setting. And you know, here it states that it's close to Willard Bay State Park, Antelope Island State Park. There's some additional income in this opportunity. These are just little snippets from the listing and highlight that there's no electricity, water, sewage, TV connection. And yet at the same time it says there is public water available, so you can hook, you can fill your tank back up, you're not attached to anything necessarily.
And again, this is just one, like only one is allowed to park, like one per night?
Actually, this listing states three, but they may not be aware of the state definition that limits it to one, because the two or more.
Would make it an RV park.
They may not be fully aware and allow up to three RVs. But I, I will go back to this definition that states a site tract or parcel of land on which facilities have been developed. So that would require some analysis and a, you know, some coordination with Beaver Health Department, say, what if a farmer has three parcels and can they share a drive to have two or three sites? And so that would have to kind of be dissected a bit.
And the definition of facilities have been, if it's just, if it's your barnyard or parking room, is that a facility that you built for that purpose? Might be.
For your department to work on, the facilities one could be argued in there too, the way.
That, that is a question that we could.
Because campground ones, it's a facility, right? You got a pad for each one to pull up to, so that might be one you'd want to look into for.
You know, and some, I, I think the Health Department would probably go and inspect and look for signs of illegal dumping and, and if there was any abuse and misuse of, of dumping, then they'd obviously lose their permit. Those all conditions have to be built in. Anyway, it's kind of interesting to see this as a potential trend.
Yeah. I mean, I, I just love it as an, another option for farmers or the winery or, you know, some of our other small scale producers to get yet another stream of income. That, that's fairly just, you know, that's not very disruptive.
Right, doesn't take much on their part. Or like an Airbnb, you can Airbnb just a piece of dirt, you know?
I think there were some listings on Airbnb and other places where it's just a place to park your RV.
Right.
Yep, and you might have a, you know, picnic table, shade structure. So I think that the price point would vary based on how nice it is, how nice the experience is and maybe, maybe your preference for what you're smelling, your tolerances of what you smell.
Right, so I mean, is it legal for someone that has maybe an open acre or two to let twenty people come and call it an Airbnb?
Well, now I'm trying to draw from my memory of what's currently allowed in agritourism. And is there not a bed and breakfast option?
There is an over, there is a, an overnight transient lodging option in that.
So a limited number of rooms, hence a limited number of people. And then this would be in addition to that. There could be lodging and.
Yeah, I mean, when we have, we've had like eclipses or something and everybody goes to like those parts of the country that are, you know, right in line with that and they're just renting a farmer's field, whether it's for the day or overnight or a week or whatever.
So it could be one more way to promote agritourism, which is in our draft general plan, drafting general plan, one of those key questions that went to the public and received some good support.
So does that mean all, all the people that have a, a big enough parcel that they have their own private campgrounds where eight or ten of them camp every weekend need to have a permit?
Are we looking too far on some of these?
On a similar scenario though, we passed that straw maze out in Petersburg and, and all these people are sitting around him and I'm thinking, oh, this is going smooth, they're here to support him. And then it hit the fan. So I don't know, it's tough wherever you go.
I, you know, I think there's the home party where I'm bringing my friends over versus I'm listing this and I'm the host and I stay out of their way or I respond to their requests as much as a host would need to, there's kind of that line.
But under state code, there's no line.
Correct, I, well, right, state code wouldn't preclude a bunch of people from visiting each other and whooping it up, you know?
Well, it says parking of two, of two or more RVs.
That's what I said.
Develop, no, develop facilities.
That's, that's, I think that developed facilities is, you're gonna have to come up to a definition for some.
Yes.
Yeah, a group that goes down the river and they have ground down there and they camp down there all summer long, you know, some weekends it's two, some weekends it's ten.
We have a, we have a fire pit down there.
Well, that's what I mean, I don't, I don't see that as something they need to come through this office for a permit.
And, and you know.
It may, it may be somewhere tied to a listing where they're getting income or getting paid for that plot of ground.
That's probably the line.
Maybe somewhere there, it's gonna have to be.
Are they getting paid for it? Is it their friends and neighbors that are letting? State free.
Right, so I think that, that key would be developed in order to provide temporary living quarters. So if it's just ancillary, if it's something that's on your property that you use, most of the time it's just your family use, so people who are residents of that property. So in my backyard, we've got fire pit, we're putting in a trampoline this summer for my kid's birthday and, you know, theoretically, yeah, I could have people.
Well, I don't know, if you go along the valley, you know, down along the Bay River, there's areas along the, the.
Blacksmith Fork is a whole park around there.
Yeah, there's some pretty minorly developed campgrounds.
Right.
But I don't think they're, they're leasing them out, but there's, some of them get fairly large.
Would that be a differentiating, as, as they've already said, just to build on top of like that second paragraph means any site tract or parcel of land on which facilities have been developed to provide temporary living quarters for two or more recreational vehicles and generates a revenue or charges a fee?
It would probably make it a lot clearer for a lot of those.
But I think you can take that to the, take that to the nth degree and say, okay, you brought up Blacksmith Fork.
Yeah, there's.
The family owns, the family owns ten acres of.
Sometimes they rent those out.
Of Blacksmith Fork. Well, even if it's just the family, well, we've got ten siblings here and we all have our RVs and we, we bring them in on this, on this parcel, it doesn't have to be ten acres. I mean, with RVs, you can stack those, those pretty, pretty close and you have, you have the same impact.
And, and even some of those, we'll rent those on weekends and say, if you, you know, another family says, hey, can we rent it for the weekend?
But.
I don't know, I don't know that we want to regulate all those guys.
Well, speaking of this though, the county made the news, not in the most positive spotlight this last week, with them closing them couple acres below Porcupine because people have trashed it. They were camping there and leaving all their trash, so they closed it right off.
And that was a pub, public.
Yeah.
Area they had to close.
Okay, well, I, I think this discussion helps in terms of the lens to do this and then follow a conversation with Health Department. We're, we're trying to check in regularly with Beaver Health Department and, you know, explore not only current applications, but long-range planning, how do we, how do we best accommodate cluster development and transferable development rights with creative approaches to septic systems and such? So we'll keep that up and keep in mind your, your helpful feedback here. I want to jump to.
Can I just get one, one other comment on this? You know, I think as we look at this, I mean, if you tried to, if you tried to reserve a campground up Logan Canyon.
Ain't gonna happen.
I mean, it's, it's a year in advance that you're, if you want Tony Grove on the Fourth of July, you better be there at.
At midnight.
Midnight, one year prior and, and, and do that. And, you know, we looked through COVID and they, and they couldn't purchase RVs anywhere because the, the inventory just evaporated because people were getting out so much and, and I think as we look at this, I think, I think we have to realize that we live in a desirable place for this type of activity and, and there's a, there's demand. You know, a lot of people that, that may be complaining that an RV park's in their back grant in their backyard, actually have an RV in their backyard or at a storage unit that they don't like either and, and they take it out in the weekend to a place like this. So I, I think we gotta be really careful about reacting to a very unpopular proposal.
Yeah.
And, you know, kind of pasting that over the entire issue. I think, I think this is something that people are, you know, there's a, there's a big demand for it and a real potential to maybe bolster agriculture or, or other, other things as, as well, other, other industries that people specifically want to do this. And so I think we need to keep our eyes open or, or minds open to that potential.
I was out in the, you know, the basin the last month, week or Monday and when the oil boom was just going crazy, there were some farmers out there that it was four hundred dollars for a spot, park your RV and he ran a, so, you know, sewer line above ground and down into a holding tank and he could get four hundred dollars or had like sixty of them in there and didn't matter the winter, you know, of cold blowing, but, and there was multiple deals like that during the boom out there.
Yeah.
And when they built, in North Logan, when they had, between the, the.
Standard camp and the camper.
Yeah, when that was built, wasn't that kind of to house the workers that were building camp?
A lot of them were the, the gas line replacement.
Well, that's what it was, gas, gas line. Guys. And I can't remember, I don't know who built it, who serviced it.
I think it was Alice Elder that was involved with it.
And then kind of, it went away because of zoning or what?
I'm still there, I think.
Yeah, I mean.
But I have to remember, I think it's in the. That, yeah, not be used anymore if it was access or what?
I think you'd end up having something viewed on access they got, but yeah, I don't, but yeah, that's.
Because they originally were coming off the highway, then they closed it and they have to come from behind.
It was for, it was for construction workers because they couldn't afford to stay in hotels and that company bought all those trailers and housed them there.
Yeah.
So, yeah, and that's certainly, we can see a lot more of that. And the mini housing deal, we've made it trip down through Moab and, and a couple of those RV parks now have the mini homes sitting so you can rent the mini home. But it's an RV park originally, but now they park it over.
Just like you hire, hire them down, right? There's two mini houses there, they're tough sheds, but, and then the rest are camp spots. A lot, a lot of camp spots have those little mini home type things you can stay in. And I think, yeah, I think, I think this will need a lot more discussion because especially if we're gonna tie it to agritourism, I mean, out there on your dad's place, you know, it's a perfect example of where that would be a huge hit, people to come out there and canoe. There's nowhere to camp around color reservoir curb. You have that huge recreational thing there and no, no camping and all private ground, I think.
But in a way, this kind of.
They'd be running there somewhere, somewhere around there.
This is kind of, kind of like the airport deal though. We get a few pilots landing in their fields random or whatever and then people start complaining. So then we try and govern them and then we get ourselves in kind of more trouble there.
As I say, it's gotta be well thought out, but I, but I think there's a, I think there's a demand.
A year or two to get this one right.
Beneficial use to it if we, if it's done in a, in a thought out manner. Yeah, I, I, I think it's a great idea. You can also on the other side see how it could be abused, right?
If you've got a thousand of them down there and.
Yeah.
Yeah, it could get, it could get really bad too, so this.
It's, it's neat that the Health Department though has that or it's, it's, it's nice that they have that, I guess, because even though we didn't feel we had leverage, they do.
Yeah.
So learn something every week.
Is, 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 is it, you're, not, not necessarily you, Tim, but like is it the county's intent to get rid of the RV use in RV campground, excuse me, RV campground as a, as a potential use in the A-10?
I, I think the intent was to put pause on application, potential applications.
Yeah.
And just have this time to discuss and explore. And two possibilities that, that we see are, one is more of a dispersed approach.
Yes.
Maybe agritourism starts to disperse and allow for kind of the shared economy approach versus something that's more commercial in nature and large and then the question is where.
Right, so they.
Such a thing occur.
Yeah. The idea might be to pull that use out of A-10 as a conditional use and put it in the commercial as a permitted use or something like that.
Yeah, that, that's gonna need some careful evaluation and we have the valley or county wide exploration of where the larger facilities might be most appropriate. We know that cities tend not to like them nearby, or I would assume other cities in Smithfield, but perhaps not like that. And then just reading the minutes of early twenty twenty one, Logan City and staff's findings that, that there's just a strong push and demand to let people stay more than thirty days. So yes, there are vacationers, but there are also people that need a place to stay while they temporarily work or temporarily save money for housing or they have no grounding option. And so what's the intent behind this? And, and then the staff also stated how difficult this is to enforce.
Yeah.
And so anecdotally I've heard, you know, and so I think interested neighbors, near a community have probably been a lot by and make sure that there's not someone staying more than thirty days, but some of these facilities are sort of, just become familiar in the landscape and forgotten and ignored and I suspect that many of them are used the way that my former coworkers.
Is the little one, is the little one in Logan, is that one just grandfathered in because it's been there so long next to the Blacksmith Fork River?
Rex Peterson put that in.
That one must just be grandfathered.
Back two thousand.
Yeah, they're there.
Where is it?
I think it's.
Seventeen hundred south.
Yeah.
It's in the city, that's.
Yeah, it's in Logan City.
Might be grandfathered.
I wonder if it's just old enough that it's.
Grandfathered in terms of like these.
Well, and, and in terms of Logan City's thirty day staylet.
Oh.
It's there.
They definitely stay with the longer.
Yeah, they stay there for permanent.
Right. Hey, but in pursuing this too, may I suggest we consider some different levels and I think a couple of you already alluded to this, but if we were to allow for the agritourism, I think of like when we were doing the elk place that Summers put in out there, they were allowed so many, I can't remember if it was two or four, two, maybe it was two, two living quarters per, with two people per deal, but I just think to support agritourism, we need to maybe have a little, obviously it's gonna be a less amount of trailers or less amount of stalls, but maybe allow something there that would encourage that or permit it versus someone putting in thirty or sixty for a commercial venture.
They're gonna run into that problem though, two or more.
It's gonna be.
Now they've gotta be.
Because the Health Department.
A water system and a sewer system.
So it isn't going to really matter, I didn't.
Per parcel, yeah, so if you have 10 parcels, you could.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or or or.
Facilities have been developed.
Right, yeah, there's still a few. I think there's a lot of, a lot of work to do there still, look at some of that.
But these.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I, I, I was just going to say, I mean, just following up on Brady. I mean, if we said, okay, let's, you know, let's allow up to three or something like that, then it's still is a conflict with state.
But but with that too, Keith Mikkel was the one that kind of, uh, I'd, I'd heard him mention that, that he was really struggling trying to find help. So he was wondering about if we could get some variance with, you know, having more than one residence on a parcel to be able to house hired help. Uh, this could potentially help offset that too. But the 30 day deal restricts it, I guess.
That's a, could be up for discussion too. So it's either this or that perhaps.
But then you get a contractor at the same time that, you know, he's wanting to house his guys or give them a place to stay. I don't know.
Same tat though, you know, is it?
Huh?
What are we trying to do? Are we trying to promote ag or are we?
Well, you, you, you could have a different one too. You could have one that that fits under the agritourism. You could have another one specifically for, uh, large construction projects that allows for longer than that. Then you have the recreational ones similar to what was proposed in Smithville, that just were transient people coming in and out.
It really is.
You may have to, you may have to have a different condition use permit for each type.
Agritourism.
Yeah.
So.
Or hopefully some or one of those would would be a permitted use in a particular zone or something.
It's kind of like an ADU where it's owner occupied. If it's one property, but then, and so you get the good on site and kind of care management and.
Yeah.
But I, I appreciate the reference to the term agritourism, which is, implies the recreational kind of, uh, nature of it.
I think that the agritourism ones are going to be the, the one or two or threes, right? And then the recreational ones are going to be the bigger ones.
Yeah.
So one question related to the larger facilities, I've put this, these images back up or we had the joint workshop with council. And these were some ideas for cluster development or cluster and transfer. And the reason I put these back up on the board is to frame up a question related to if, if residential development has incentives to encourage land preservation and, uh, develop a little pattern or format that facilitates that land preservation. Should a, uh, larger campground facility also have a similar requirement? In other words, did they rezone property without an open space requirement and just replace ag land and land with, with that campground use? Or should they also be responsible for contributing to the rural, growing quality of life that that may be encouraged for residential development? Uh, and that's certainly the case with the resort. So I just, uh, put that out there without a, an answer by online. And then what should the spacing limitation be between the facilities?
I guess it depends on what these facilities end up looking like. You know, I've seen a lot of campground RV parks that are, would meet the definition of open space. I've seen others that, you know, it's all hard surface or, you know, it's a, it's a real commercials, commercial looking space. And, and, uh, and so I think, I, I think we'd have to take that into account as well. Because if it's a, if it looks like a park, it looks like open space, do we care if there's trailers on it?
Well, you look at Donetta.
Mm-hmm.
I think there's a perfect example, but, uh, I go pass there quite regularly in the summer. And I don't go in there and count license plates and see if there's the same ones staying. But for that attraction, I mean, they pack a lot of trailers in there for a short period of time.
Crystal Hot Springs does the same year round. I mean, it, those, those, they've had to continue to expand.
I don't think we've, maybe at this time, I can't think of anywhere in this valley though that would be as short a term as that. But, I mean, they contain it pretty well and take care of it.
I mean, one, uh, one area to, to consider, and I, I guess maybe that's federal property. I was thinking Newton Dam out there. And if you go there on any given weekend, there's half a dozen trailers, campers out there at that. And during the summer, a lot more.
Are those, are those pace sites?
No, there's, there's no. And see, and I would think that fits the definition of no facilities. There's, there's nothing out there. I would think that fits the definition of no facilities because there's nothing out there. They're just parking, most of them illegally because it is.
Federal property.
Ground and they have, they have a lot of problems with trash and they're trying to get more sheriff patrol out there.
Yeah.
And that's kind of the problem of no facilities and no regulation on grounds that people that don't live in the valley own and don't care. Really, state parks are supposed to, Hyrum Reservoir State Park is supposed to patrol that, but they don't because they don't get anything. So the residents of Newton kind of get the short end of the stick on that reservoir.
I'll share this perspective and invite Angie's agreement or disagreement. I think from staff enforcement, I think it'd be easier to probably lower maintenance for agritourism than full on campground to monitor the 30 day stay.
Yeah.
What do you think, Angie?
Definitely.
There's kind of a whole new level of, and, and, and just I gather that Logan City staff doesn't have time to go do a routine check, monthly or quarterly check of campground. So there's, it's kind of that aspect of maybe we try agritourism first and then explore if, if a, if a campground facility with merit in terms of its location and, um, complimentary use to other recreation kind of opportunities presents itself, then maybe there's something that's, that's developed in our code for that. Um, it's kind of hard to pre-anticipate some things. I, I know I personally have questions about how many larger scale campgrounds, too many in our valley? What kind of spacing limitations might be necessary? Or does it start to be kind of the, the lure away from residential cluster development and ag preservation? We start to get too many campgrounds? I, I don't know. It'd be a saturation point at some point, but.
Could, yeah, do you guys use overlay zones where you can decide, you know, each one that comes before you that wherever they're asking for that, you can decide if you rezone it to that because it isn't a matter of it meeting the code? You really can just use your opinion to say, no, we don't want it there, yes, that's a great place for it.
Performance based.
Like if it was its own zone or some kind of overlay, but you don't actually zone anything that unless someone comes and applies for a rezone or that overlay, and then you can judge them on it as they come.
That could be a good approach.
I think kind of observant, observant as we're, as we're doing this, kind of keep our eye out. Because even though I gave a positive example of the Donetta one, Franklin City's got that one on the south end right on along the road that's quite an eyesore, depending upon what they've got. So I think we could all kind of look around.
That one set up more as official trailer park.
But used to be.
They do, they do a lot of just cancers in there still.
It used to be, I think, like the single whites, but they've been replaced by.
Yeah, a number of them, those got old, set replaced and they put campers in there. But I think that's what it's zoned as, as a, as a trailer park.
I like Melinda's, um, take on this, uh, you know, maybe looking at an overlay or even a specific zone for recreation, recreation zone. Thinking back to some of the big challenges that we've had over the times, you know, the Cherry Peaks and the, and Whisper Ridge and, and, you know, the various different recreation that then, you know, sure was never approved, but Beaver Mountain. I mean, you, you look at, uh, you look at recreation facilities and I'm sure we, you know, we, we look at that and we have our own opinions about, about those things. Maybe if there were a zone that were specific to recreation that could have its own set of rules, that, you know, then there's that hurdle that they'd have to get over that would be much easier than, hey, it's, this is a, this isn't a, um, a use, conditional use in the A10. Well, then when, you know, Cherry Peak type development comes along, they've got to get through that zoning hurdle before it's to the conditional use.
Maybe use a similar approach right now for gravel pits and, uh, public infrastructure. They have to have that overlay first before they can apply for the CEP.
And does that work fairly well?
Yeah.
I think for those uses it does.
You see them and know.
Impacts are looked at before it's rezoned in great detail.
Right, because we weren't considering a five lot subdivision tonight. We were considering a rezone, like they don't, they don't have to come to us with, that we're trying to do this into two lots or five lots or whatever. They're just asking for a rezone. But when you consider a rezone, you're, you have to imagine the worst that could come with that.
Well, maybe we could dig into some ideas for an overlay or zoning approach to the larger scale and maybe, uh, visit with, uh, health department regarding how this might be, this, um, onesie twosie approach might be interpreted for agritourism. Get back with the next one.
One of the biggest challenges will be there, the restriction of the.
Public water.
The catch station and public water.
Because anything in the town is not going to have a public water system, so everyone is out essentially.
Because these locations that we're going to see or probably choose as the more ideal spots are going to be away from.
Yeah.
These needs.
Something with enough gross revenues to cover the cost of the monitoring, coordination and reporting, all of that. Okay.
Good discussion, commissioners. Anything else on item five? Ready to move to item six, Tim?
Okay. I think this evening is just more of a, an introduction of the thinking behind a new code amendment application by our department, development services. And giving more precise, uh, definition and, uh, clear regulations where we differentiate between mineral, mineral extraction, topsoil extraction and site grading. And I've highlighted site grading in particular, given that we, we think that there could be a loophole that needs to be addressed. And I just illustrated below with a larger parcel on, uh, and this might represent agricultural structural square. Where site grading could allow for up to 1,500 cubic yards per parcel. But in reading the definition, it's associated and incidental to the construction of a building. Um, says including normal, but not including normal cultivation associated with an agricultural operation. But if an agricultural subdivision could still qualify for greenbelt with contiguous parcels and this large parcel becomes multiple parcels and one's intent was to extract 1,500 cubic yards on each of those parcels, then, um, we feel that that's not the intent of the code, but we think that the code could be strengthened to make it more clear that that's not the intent of the code. So that's one aspect of the sculpt of this.
So is that site grading only specific if there's then exporting or selling what they're grading? Or is that just for leveling a lot?
Well, that's where I think further, further clarity could be helpful.
Could, could you even decipher that first sentence for us in your understanding? Because if, if I read that correctly, it says that it's, you can do it if you're going to put a building on it, but you can't do it for normal.
I think it's maybe the opposite of that. I read it the opposite of that.
So it's a, it's a definition of what qualifies as site grading. So what qualifies as site grading is the act of excavation excluding normal agricultural cultivation. So that's what.
So, so, so clarify that.
So if you're doing agricultural cultivation, that does not fall within this definition of site grading.
If you level your.
So you're not restricted.
Even if you're leveling your, your ag land and selling off 2,000 cubic yards of topsoil in the process.
If that's part of normal cultivation associated with your operation, maybe.
The, the reason I ask is, is we were a benefactor of doing that. We had a particular piece that was really rocky and it, it was just weird it had this point right here. And we worked through the county and we wanted to make sure we were legal. But they told us, all we were doing it for, we didn't even charge. We told them, you take it, you do it and don't charge us for doing it. But they held us to, I thought it was 1,300 yards. And it improved our field. We were able to be more efficient, more productive by getting rid of that knob.
You brought topsoil back in?
Huh?
You brought some topsoil in to replace that area?
Uh, they might have brought a little bit back in for, I think they did, or, or maybe if.
Or you just brought it down.
Salvaged it.
I think they took a little off the top because there wasn't much there. I mean, it was straight rock.
Yeah.
But it did benefit us, but that's why I'm asking clarification on that because we were told that as long as we did, and it runs in my mind, it was 1,300 yards, but it could have been 15. But we were told we couldn't do more than that.
Well, I, you know, that would be interesting to consider your experience with that. We're just seeing some potential for, uh, application that clearly exceeds the purpose and intent of site grading and does not, uh, support or.
Like Smithville pit.
Not complimentary to agriculture.
I'm sorry, can you, can you tell me what we're, I have no idea what we're even talking about. Can you tell me what we're even talking about? What's site grading for or?
Site grading is, if I want to put a building, say I have a moderately sloping site and I need to bring my, um, excavating track hoe and bulldozer or whatever it is, the equipment, and dig the hole for the foundation. And then I need to, uh, adjust the grade so that, uh, everything drains away from the building. And, uh, so I have cut and fill, and in some cases I need to haul dirt away or I have excess. In some cases I can take what I cut and fill it elsewhere, but I should not remove more than 1,500 cubic yards.
Because.
Incidental to the development of, of roads, drives and buildings.
So, so remove is taking off the lot? That, that's the one I'm still, is it just grading or is it taking it off the site?
It could be.
Gravel pits.
It's, it's.
Could be home.
I think it's because we don't want it to turn into.
It's not necessarily, they have to have a definition overall, but it's really gravel pits is what this is all based on.
Earth moving, that's not a gravel pit.
Yeah.
But we had a gravel pit application in the last year that their purpose or intent of their application was they wanted to build some open sheds for their cows. That's what they said. That's why they were wanting to haul this gravel out of there.
But really they were getting paid. Someone was buying the gravel from them.
They were going to sell that gravel. And we can't say that they weren't going to build the sheds.
The site grading is separate from gravel or soil extraction. That's a separate permit that you would apply for if you're moving more than 1,500 cubic yards. Is that the way that reads?
Because gravel pits aren't allowed.
Whereas the neutral, whereas those other, um, because they're so ugly.
Require.
Require conditional use permit or.
On the noise, the wear and tear of your roads. They rip the roads up.
I might throw myself one of those, but on my law, just, you know, talking with Matt, he said as soon as we had the storm work from it, we could grade. And maybe he didn't realize we might move 1,500 cubic yards of material.
It's not that much.
It's not, that, that's hardly any on it. And we were a pretty flat lot out there, but to flatten that, and we didn't, we didn't ex, take anything off or bring anything in to level that. It was leveled with soil on site, but I would pretty much guarantee we moved over 1,500 cubic yards.
Did you end up with a big gravel pit on your property?
No, there's no gravel out there.
So it's clay.
It's all, yeah, it's, it's just soil. We just, we just took one, you know, lifted up the other end and took it from one end and made a, a half a percent slope on the lot. But that's why, I, I don't, in, in my mind, I don't know where in the process it would have triggered me to say I needed a zoning clearance, I guess. And maybe that's in the process.
It wouldn't have if you're doing it to level your field, you know, for farming.
It wouldn't.
Would not have triggered.
But it's first one, I was leveling it for my storage units.
What are that for?
And working with, working with the development office and, and the engineering office. I don't know, that's in my mind, just seeing where as a developer in that case, what would have triggered me to.
Triggers a land disturbance permit, which would kind of cover this site grading itself.
What we're adding, what you're adding, you're bringing in.
It's, it's pretty common throughout, I mean, that's what we're doing. I have, I own semis and we're hauling in on thousands of yards every day into this valley to, to do exactly what we're saying we can't do, we're adding.
Well, we can do it, we just need a, a zoning clearance before it happens.
Well, I mean, that's part of an approved development. This, this doesn't matter.
Yeah.
This is irrelevant if it's a part of an approved development.
Okay.
So I agree.
So maybe, maybe I'm.
So it doesn't apply to the storage sheds.
That's, that's my take, maybe I'm wrong.
Removal, yeah. It's removal of the material.
We don't care about addition so much. We don't care about addition so much as we do removal, because it's.
No, it says fill, it says any act of excavation or filling or combination thereof.
So it is confusing.
I think part of this goes back to Matt's concerns that on a lot of developments that are going in, we're changing the natural flow patterns of, of watersheds and it's causing issues elsewhere. Uh, maybe that's not where it's coming from, I just know a conversation with him on this, the watershed study we're doing on the west side, that's one of the concerns, a lot of these homes go in and they grade and they, they fill in a, a natural drainage that they don't know is a natural drainage till we get a wet year, five years down the road.
Okay.
And I, I don't know if that's where this fits or not, but.
What's the purpose of this discussion, why was it brought up?
Thank you.
Who brought this up anyway?
That's what I said.
Someone tried to get at, there's, there's something going on that's triggered this to be on the agenda, who put this on the agenda?
All of the good comments and questions indicate that all three sections need further clarification. And I'd like to defer to Chris next meeting as to how much additional detail he'd like to share as to the
Where it's coming from.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's regardless of why, regardless of why, it's clear that we're confused by these.
Well, that sixty-four twenty's definitely confusing.
Yeah.
No question.
So it's worth, worth fixing, but we'll get the, we'll get the backstory, maybe.
And the counties enforce that, if, if, if ag has an exemption, the counties enforce that incorrectly.
So my. Well, I think, I think the difference is, is normal cultivation associated, so according, if, if you're working with FSA in there or anything on normal cultivation, you can do normal cultivation through a, a farm to wetland, which is, is basically plowing, disking, those type of things. If you're removing a large amount or filling a large amount, that's not normal.
Still applicable.
It's not normal farming practice, according to the federal government.
But we do it regularly on our farm, we're filling in.
If, if you're just dragging a land plane, that is a regular one, but he's taken on, it sounded like a little bit more than you normally would on a normal farming operation.
We're filling in big goalies to make the, you know, so things are more, you know.
Don't tell Matt Phillips that, that's part of the problem.
So, so we just need to find out what the, what the agenda is with these.
Fifteen hundred yards isn't that much, is what I'm saying, that's why.
The exercise of trying to define this and apply it to specific, you know, applications is, is telling that it needs more clarity.
Yeah. Speaking of, have you looked at SBN law?
As you're, as you're reviewing, I can't remember the exact code on this, in the past on, on some of these uh, excavation gravel.
You had the worry of pisgus there.
You know, requirement that they could only excavate a certain percentage of it, or was it percentage? And use that we had or a certain acreage, and then they had to.
Well, they usually have a master plan, there shows a certain phases and then the reclamation.
So was that, was that, was that site specific for each different plan, that wasn't in the code that said that?
No, the code requires them to have a, a phasing plan and a reclamation.
Hurts my heart, yeah.
So, um, yeah, that's part of it.
Cause some of these, I mean, they just keep going and going and going, and we don't get it re- reclaimed, and then you have a big scar on the side of it.
SV Hill, we're talking about it right now.
I wasn't gonna go specific, but yeah.
That's my backyard.
That's what it is, it's SV Hill, isn't it?
Big sun blister.
Somebody's up there saying, this is just part of farming.
It's always good discussion.
Good discussion. Is that it, Tim? Commissioners, you got anything else?
I'd just like to say, I followed the uh, the um, the denial on, what's Todd Davis's development that we denied?
Yeah.
I followed that through, took two meetings to get through that, and the council approved it, um.
The rezone?
The rezone.
Or what was?
For that, they.
He was asking for a hardship, wasn't he?
Yeah.
The hardship was.
Oh, oh, the R, RU five, okay, yeah.
Yes, because they said, well, if you can come back, the council basically said they would like to cease a change in that, in the write-up of that um, road, uh, part of it, that says you can't extract or fill to fit the grade. And everybody on the council basically says, I don't see why not. Um, engineering can easily do that in a lot of different ways, and so, anyway, they just, I followed it through because I was in several of the meetings, why a couple of the councilmen after they approved, said, make sure you let planning and zoning know that you did the right thing by denying it, but we saw why you kinda said, yeah, we, we can see it, it could be done. Um, so, anyway, they appreciated what we did, um, and they're looking to change some language now. Um, have your office do change some language so that we can figure out how to take care of things like, steep slopes.
Yeah.
But that's not what this is.
No.
But it could be, if they had it with more than fifteen hundred cubic yards.
Exactly, cause I was thinking of that one as we're reading this, I'm like, well, I wonder if that, you know, if he wanted to regrade that.
Could he be pretty easy, if you're regging fifteen hundred yards on a hillside goes in a day.
Pretty quick, yeah.
You started, you started a lot of discussions, it was just one line.
Got us all fired up, there was nothing controversial on this agenda tonight.
Just on this, going back to trailer park, had we known about the state law and everything else?
Yeah.
How would that have changed all of our, how much time and stress and everything without a state, everybody?
He's still would've done everything, it just would've, we would've put a condition and said, you have to meet that and get a uh, public water sys- system.
Well, they might not have pursued it or?
Yeah, or they may not have, they may not have.
That, maybe they wouldn't have pursued.
So how do we incorporate that into the clearing process before it hits us, that's what I, I know you guys do the best you can, but
Yeah, I think, I think it's pretty hard.
Is it changing?
I think it's just something that had never come up, right, you guys had never come up, so they'd never looked into it.
I swear we've had health department must, but it's, it's usually septic that it's referenced.
Yeah.
But we never, we never had anything on it.
Cause the health department does review these applications, right?
So, so why didn't they say that it had to have like a septic system?
It might've been helpful if they'd have said.
Well, that's what I'm saying, they didn't, they didn't actually review that one when it went to them the first time.
Yeah, but it's kind of, um, I don't know if you remember, we had a CUP while back for a private family cemetery. I don't know anything about the state or federal requirements for handling.
Right. In Petersburg, yeah.
So that was included in there that, you know, we're okay with it, but you still gotta meet all the other requirements, I think. That's in our code, it may not have been stated explicitly here, but still applicable.
And, yeah. It's nice after the first part of the year to have, and I missed out on the best meeting, you guys were out of here by six last, last time, right?
Yes.
Last time, right?
I, I will.
I'm saying you don't appreciate this, it's so scary.
I will mention again that we're making a, a habit of checking in with the health department for both these current planning um, applications, some of which are clear or need clarification, and others which we have no familiarity with the requirements, and then to uh, understand what creative options there are to to be more creative with land development and preservation, so they, they've appreciated those, uh, the beginnings of that process.
I mean, I think, back to your comment, something like this happens, we learn from it and I think we, we know ahead, yeah, that's good.
We learned something, we all did, I think, that's why I'm bringing it out, going forward, let's, you know, something crazy, you know.
Right.
As publicized as that, I think it could've infused a lot of what we were up against that night.
True, true.
June and Jen.
Good, yeah, thank you.
Uh, next month, rezones, um, one subdivision amendment, um, but yeah, rezones are coming in pretty regularly.
Do we, do we have anything from Cherry Peak coming back here or the airport?
Uh, I don't, um. I believe Chris meant to have the.
The airport is, is coming back around.
But aren't they approaching their ninety days of next meeting?
Uh.
It'd have to be.
Yes, um, I unders- what I understand is their council is trying to get more in contact with the FAA to make it offici- officially recorded somehow that they can only, aircraft can only approach from a certain direction, um, similar to what they're talking about last time. So, but it is coming back around.
And then Cherry Peak, um, their application was incomplete, so it was returned to them and their funds refunded. So, um, until they submit something else, they're not currently pending.
So are the concerts off, I mean, that's what moved everything last year.
Well, I heard a little fluff about it, they were trying to get some things done, but uh, to avoid having to go to high school again, but that's basically, at this point, that's where they're gonna be at, right?
I'm not sure what their plans are, but they don't have an application.
That's all she has to worry about, she doesn't have to worry where they're going, she just knows.
Very diplomatic that way, that's right.
I get free music.
Anything else, commissioners?
Pretty tight left staff.
Okay, without objection, we'll close the meeting.